Move to second on the table.
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to start it off in the old business, the budget report.
Yes, at the last meeting, another two B F meeting, I thought Kathy said we had to start this.
I did. I'm not familiar with this, this is a new document for me, but what I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're, is our fiscal year first of July?
No, it's calendar year.
It's calendar year. Okay, well then. Down in the right hand corner, that's an expenditure of seventy-four percent of the budget?
Is remaining.
Is remaining, okay.
Because it does say percent.
It says percent spent.
It does say that.
Did we say seventy-five percent?
Oh, because the school, because of the school budget, part of the school budget is from last year. And I think that's why I don't have a budget net in there for the school or for the overlay or the summer year, so it makes it look like there's more spend than we actually had under budget net. Because until we know what the school for the last six months is going to be, I can't actually enter that in under budget act. Because they have a fiscal year, we go by calendar year.
I got it.
So that's why it looks like we actually spent more than.
Looks like you spent a hell of a lot, yes, it does.
Well, we, we have the one million five hundred nine thousand at an unexpendable balance for the school. It hasn't been carried over to a spend.
Right, that is, the one thou, the one million is what has actually been spent.
Okay, so that needs to get scooted over to her.
There's a little negative line there.
Where's the negative line?
Well, at least I see it on my document, but I'm sort of.
Yeah, but.
Okay, when, when, I'll tell you what, here's the way that we might be able, able to get through this. Why don't you walk them through the document, you could call them by calling and kind of explain it to them, just explain the report, is it?
Wouldn't you just use the school as an example?
Yeah, you say school.
So the, under the debits and the credits and the year-to-date net, if you look, because I don't, yours isn't in color, the unexpendable balance is actually a negative amount.
Yes.
And the rest of them are all positive amounts. So it doesn't have anything under budget net because we have a calendar year. So I don't know what the school's six months is going to be, so I don't have under budget net, so it looks like we're overdrawn, or we've spent, spent too much money under the school.
But that's an artifact of the different.
The different fiscal years.
Right, and same with overlay, we haven't committed taxes, so I don't know what our overlay is going to be. So the budget net is everything we approved at town meeting.
So theoretically, that could balance out when you get the numbers from the school.
Right.
Okay.
It always has.
And so you really just want to look at the percentage spent for each of these departments, and it's for the first four, with the exception of the public works, and that's because of the salt and sand, the, everybody's under budget.
Yep.
It looks pretty good.
I have a question, in that, in the unexpendable balance section, why doesn't the final total match up with those figures, or is there a reason for that, or?
Well, you, I also have, when I printed this expense summary report, this is only for one fund, but there's actually four different funds. So these numbers that come under the final totals include all four funds, which are capital reserve accounts, special revenue accounts, and our trust funds.
Can we have those printed on here, so it's easier for us to follow?
Okay. Yeah. Anybody else got anything? Seeing none, let's move right on down.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And we're going to start it off with the library, request for top paid passes.
Yes, did you want to turn this?
This is the third year in a row that I have requested this. We get eight-part passes from a different variety of attractions in the state of Maine, which provide either a discount or a free admission to our patrons. All they have to do is come in to see us, and we sign it up for a specific day, they take in the, in most cases, they turn the paper rate into the attraction and leave it there. There's two of them that they have to bring it back to us. This comes out of our revenues account, which we have plenty of money in, but offhand, I can't tell you what the number is, I forgot to look before I came up. It's a great outreach opportunity, it's wonderful for those community members that can't afford to take their kid to the planetarium, here's an option to do it for free and use your library, it's a benefit that we get. There's no, each one of the, the attractions sets their own parameters for how many people can use the pass and all of that, but we can issue one pass every day that we're open to each one of these attractions. So it's well worth it for the thousand dollars, thousand one hundred and twenty.
Looks good to me.
Thank you. I've got a motion to approve this.
I'll second that.
They moved you seconded, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You might as well keep it on going.
I'm not done asking for money, but I got one more tonight. The second thing that I'm asking for is to use funds out of the Maggie Schneider Fund. It is a fund that was established a few years back. Maggie Schneider was a local Belgrade resident who died at a very young age. She was a science and ecology person, she taught young people, and she set up a fund, or her family set up a fund in her memory, to provide money towards either science and nature books and materials, or through programs of science and nature for kids. So I have two summers programs set up, one for Tuesday, July seventeenth, from Mad Science of May, and one on Tuesday, August fourteenth, from Chawonki, they're doing a bug mobile program. In both cases, they're going to be held up to the center for all seasons, so they'll be available for all people within Belgrade to go to, also all of the camp people up there attend. I believe this does fit the guidelines for the Maggie Schneider, as I've mentioned here, to develop a nature and science collection at the Belgrade Public Library, and for the library to provide nature and science programming for children. So I would just like your permission to actually pay them that amount.
How much is in that fund?
Again, I forgot to look today, it's somewhere around seven thousand dollars.
We've done this in the past.
I, I've been here for four and a half years, and I've had these two every single year, so they're absolutely fabulous, we get three, we usually get somewhere around a hundred to a hundred and thirty people to each program.
And we had quite a time getting the programs set up, because it was kind of.
Was she watching?
Was she watching, but I think we got it under control.
I'm starting to find the other author programs and whatnot, but I don't have those ready to come to you tonight. Those will come out of a different account. These two are the only ones that I anticipate coming out of the Maggie Schneider, if that changes, I'll be back to visit you.
I didn't entertain the motion?
I make the motion that we accept this and request it.
They moved you seconded, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Thank you.
Those revenues are, no, they're a, our accounts?
Just curious, that's all. I simply forgot to look to see what the balance is right now. I think Maggie Schneider's about seven thousand ninety-eight dollars.
I just wanted to feel election, no.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Do you want to go down there?
Next thing on the agenda is A C O development?
Yes, this is the animal control officer, and I, I believe I'd like to know that Kathy, Kathy Ross, who's hired effective on April twenty-fifth, so we put out a notice for need for a, an animal control officer. We had Richard Crosby operating in, in the interim, from August twenty-fifth, I mean, April twenty-fifth until present, for emergency animal control, so you may see, I don't think he's actually running it, but if he did, you may see a bill control.
I didn't see it yet, I checked it.
So, we put that out, we had one person who was not certified, came in and talked to me and all that, Richard, to see whether I, take an uncertain person, probably one of it, we had a county certified person, but this gentleman was working in Farmington, and Cheryl, I believe, was an animal control officer, some business application, and I'm recommending that you folks pull him in for the A C O.
Bud?
Yes.
Bud?
Dexter Bridges. My name is Dexter.
Dexter, Dexter Bridges.
Have you done the background check on him?
Does he also do the mail?
He no longer does, ma'am.
We give that up.
All right, I didn't entertain the motion?
I'll make the motion, second.
They moved you seconded, any more discussion? All in favor?
So tomorrow, if you get a chance tomorrow or sometime this week, I'll be to the side of the conference.
Okay, now, the one question I did have is, is the animals go to Augusta, am I understanding that? Waterville, oh.
Contract's been just a hair.
So I need a key, do I need, do I need, do you have a key for that?
Do I have a key for the shelter, you're about to talk about, you're, Kathy, I didn't, I never had a key for that.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
My speculation is, you have to worry your Uncle Sam.
Yeah, I know.
Operating.
Yeah, take care of everybody tomorrow, ma'am.
What, okay, what time?
Anytime tomorrow.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is request for property custody.
Yeah, as you know, realtors are constantly calling, and generally, we can pull the record offline and just send it to them, however, there are times when they want the actual photo or sketch or something like that, that we don't have it, so the clerks have to go back, look it up, and then either fax it or send it to them. Sometimes they'll ask for six, five, six, seven at a time. So I asked Cheryl to look around and see what other towns are doing, to try to reduce all that cost of the town. Cheryl did, there's a page on the second, one of the pages there, she looked around, and we're recommending, after Cheryl looked this up and I talked to her, three dollars fee for people that are calling in and requesting that type of service.
So three dollars minimum?
Three dollars minimum, three dollars for each, and then if they have five, it'd be fifteen, that's what the end of that was.
Gotcha.
I'll make the motion, we accept this idea.
They moved, you can second it, please.
Second.
Is this, I got a question, is this?
Well, either one of us.
Well. Why are we asking for more than any other towns?
I don't think we are.
Two towns get five dollars per card. There were a bunch that were three, there's some that are one, and then if they have to, it's a dollar for the copy, and if they have to fax it, then it's two more dollars. So they're, they're all varying, I guess.
Okay.
The three's kind of in the middle of the pack.
That's what all I can.
Just as I was reading down through it, I went home by the copy, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Take care.
I'm gonna leave these somewhere.
What is it?
A card.
Oh, yeah, just put them on my desk.
They moved you seconded.
Actually, Bud, can I have one of those?
They moved you second, all in favor?
Every stray now finds its way to mine home.
He's loading.
Yes, and I can share it, thanks.
For all seven?
Good question.
Next thing on the agenda is.
Question? So that's not for residents, though, correct?
No, no.
I should have, I was gonna bring that up.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yep, thank you.
So is that for realtors that are residents? How is that?
It's for realtors, appraisers, and bankers?
But there are plenty of realtors in town that are residents.
Then most of them will come in and get one of those.
Right, but if they want one for their own property, that's a different story, but if they're selling somebody's property.
That's right.
That makes sense.
Did that answer your question, Erin?
Yeah.
You have to look on your face, like you don't really quite.
Maybe I misunderstood, too, I thought it said, tell the residents they do.
It says on the bottom.
I know, I know that's what it said, and it's kind of what I thought, but I'm hearing a different story.
Your own property.
Yeah, your own property.
Yeah, because it says we not be charged our copy of their property cards.
Fine, we'll try it and see what happens. It's all we can say. All right, the next thing is adopt a highway program.
Yes, a while back, I think it was over a year ago, I brought this forward as an idea, I went to the transfer station committee, recycling committee, and then I went to the road committee at the, at the board's request, to get input from them. This essentially is, I provided background here, it's adopt a highway, it's, the background was all from the D O T, and then I went in and made a proposal, and the proposal is that we, we do a sponsor a highway. Some people who had, I don't know, I'll work it off. So, this out, this pretty much outlines what the program is about, how it'd be run, I'm providing the attachment there, the digital list of towns that are currently doing it in Maine, it was ten, it was nine, and I did this, which was updated to two thousand thirteen, and I did this in two thousand fifteen, so it's still back there. And then I provided a requirement for a lease, they have to sign a lease form, and then provide an activity report, so that we know how much they're picking up. The cost for the program, there's a sponsor in this program who will fund the first year, if the program proves to be successful, then the town can decide whether or not they want to move forward through the transfer sublease funds. That's up to them, but we do have a sponsor for the first year. So I'm, I'm making the proposal that we do adopt this, and that'll, that'll break through our highways and our town roads and things like that. So first town, first city, so people will be set, they're picking at least, no less than one mile segments of road, and they'll be asked to clean it up no less than two, twice a year, on volunteer basis. The town will provide, through the sponsor, will provide the bags, picker rappers, and gloves, and a safety vest. And I think there's a, I, I think what we'll do is print up some signs, too, so that people can put there between, when they're picking up, it says caution, people picking up trash.
Do they get to wear a little orange vest?
Yes, they're, a regular.
Just for him to know.
Yes.
He's laughing at me.
No, no, it's all in, it's, it's specified what they should do. There's a safety brief, there's a safety brief as well that they did as a group copy, so that if there's a group of them, they can read the safety brief to the group, or they can have it for themselves.
But the proposal is essentially these last two sheets?
The proposal is the, is the, yeah, the two sheets.
The last two sheets.
Yeah, and then there's, there are the attachments that talk about sliding away.
Can, when we, when we sign somebody up, can this possibly be simplified so that I can see it, read six pages or ten pages?
The proposal will be the proposal, it's not, it's like providing you all the background material, because I thought you needed, you would like to read about what's happening in other states, what's required by the state to adopt the program, and all that, so.
Does the state provide you, just curious, state provide you with the little brochure to gift to groups?
No.
With all, that's something that will be created through the program, okay.
Sounds like the state provides is the, is the permanent sign that goes up.
Well, we're not even going to put signs up, because that becomes a problem.
Oh, okay.
The state will only allow one sign at the, at the beginning of a road, and then anyone that's adopting in the town, it's a limited size sign, so what, this, we've got to be a website set up, and anyone that chooses to do a mile, or two miles, or whatever they choose to do, they can do it in memory of, or for the cleanliness of Belgrade, say a corporation or a business wants to do it, and have some people go out on a regular basis, it's, it's all provided for here.
I got a couple questions.
Sure.
Are we liable at all, if anybody's out there?
They signed a waiver.
I saw that, but again.
They're volunteering, they're walking, no, because we're providing them all the requirements. Look, you can, anyone can sue you.
Well, I, I know, I know that.
But, but in terms of this, we're just, we're requesting that people, if they want to volunteer for this program, they can volunteer. And so like any volunteer for the town, they, you'd be liable to that extent? You know, I mean, anyone that volunteers for any job, that's a liability, but they're required.
This is a little different, they're out on the road, they're not volunteering in the library, in the town office, they're out on a main road with Kazoo and, you know, like crazy. Has any, has anybody?
None of the towns either.
No, 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 has any group come forward?
No, because it hasn't been, there's a news, there's a press release here to announce it, and we promoted internally a website.
I think it's a great idea, but I'm worried about liability. I'm gonna go with Melanie first.
I think we should call a sponsor a cyber program, because we don't really want the one twenty-seven, that's the state.
No, these are only for town roads.
These are town roads, I think.
Yeah. But I'm saying, so sponsor a highway, I don't want, it's not a highway. It's like sponsor a cyber.
Sponsor a town road.
Thank you.
Sponsor a little town road.
As I was reading through the information that you sent out, it appeared to me that the town has got to pick up the cost of getting the big orange sign to say caution ahead and so forth, and any other, any other signs that's put up, and vests and so forth?
No, the sponsor will be picking up all the additional costs for the year, the signs themselves won't be the big orange signs, they'll be like the signs that you get on.
Like a, like a campaign sign?
Campaign sign, you'd just be able to pull them up.
And they can be reused.
Okay, so there's no, there's, all of the costs for the compliance with all of the stuff that you've included there is going to be picked up by the sponsor?
The sponsor will pick up the cost for vests, for luggage, for picker rappers.
And I'm guessing the vests and the clothes can be reused.
The bags. Okay, okay, I just, I, if, that wasn't clear to me in reading over it, I thought it was going to be a town expense.
Well, it may be after the first year, the sponsor, we just want to see how much is actually, see how many people participate.
Sponsor is M dot?
No.
A private individual?
Private, yeah.
Why do we need the state?
The state, you're, you're required to follow the guidance in the state document, they're the ones that allow you to set these programs up.
You can't have a program without having state approval. You gotta, you put democracy going.
The all-town roads, not the state roads.
I've got another question, what, what say the, what goes on, does this picking up, does it on a day that the transfer station isn't open? How are they gonna, are they gonna have to wait till?
Be a volunteer that would have to hold the trash until?
Yeah.
Unless you want to allow for a town truck to go out picking up that, I think.
No, we could put him in, in his truck.
What about like sharps?
They're, they're, that's always the hazard when you're walking along the road, right? All sharps will be, that's why this blog, so that's why.
There's a statement in here about that.
That's why you set the paper up.
But there's a statement in here about, you know, if you find.
Yes.
Sharp items, or even really large items.
So you would.
That the D O T would pick those up, you know, say seventy, those are refrigerator on the side of the road, you know.
Well, we haven't picked up that stuff.
Yeah, but I mean, if.
If there's a refrigerator or anything like that.
But they say if there's.
If we do that now.
If there's stringers or things like that, that.
Believe it.
Leave them, maybe make a note of where they are, tell somebody, and.
Yep.
They'll be taken care of accordingly.
Let's give it a try.
Well, the whole, the whole purpose of this is to try to keep our rooms clean, or these those rooms are not, are sponsored.
And if we did this in my neighborhood, it'd go on up.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. They moved you seconded, is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
We'll move forward.
Thank you.
We adopted your adoption.
Didn't try this one before.
Well, I'll tell you, another reason why I bring it forward, I've had requests in the past for the town, the whole spring cleanup days, where people allow, just pick up trash and stuff, that's done across the state in the local, it's done along lake shores, it's gone along the ocean, so this was just an attempt to, to get some people on there.
But in the ocean, they have this green there.
Well, they do have a green glass, it's all right.
They do have a green. Well, done that, let's move right on to the warrant. Somebody got the warrant? Any, you want to do the pleasure of this?
Uh, sure.
Yes.
Okay, so, warrant fifty-one, total of nineteen thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars ninety-eight cents.
All right, you have a second?
No.
They moved you seconded, any discussion? Mike?
Age one, seventeen, zero, six, eight, Travis Burton, over, overpay refund, what does that mean?
Apparently, he, as I understand, he, there was an overpayment or a refund that was due, the payment he made at the, so.
We paid him too much, or he?
No, no, he paid too much, I believe, that was the question.
Okay, it sounds like.
Draw for it.
Yeah, okay, good. On, they just stick together. On page three, number one, seven, zero, seven, five, the boiler room grate, it leaves the grates on the doors that get bad, basketball players?
Yes, I, I mean, Billie and I were just talking about that, I wonder if I, I don't know if, if the electrician or the, not the, the.
Doug Sawyer.
Whoever puts them in, whether or not we could just get them and put them in ourselves, I think that's the case.
If I had to guess, Doug Wells, if I had to guess, he made something strong enough.
We were trying to get something stronger, maybe that was it.
Wouldn't, because what was up there was just a cheap metal.
Because they were just.
Falling apart.
Falling apart.
And you can buy them at a, you know, hardware store, and we had before, and they're falling apart, so.
I had understood that, too, that they were going to maybe manufacture something that was more rugged, and that maybe, but I, I had not asked a question, that's why I don't have any trouble about it. So I think that's probably what it was, but I'll, I'll check and make sure.
We had had a spade of these a while ago, and it was the people playing basketball, and at one time, somebody said they were doing it intentionally.
Kicking the ball sometimes, I'd heard that.
Still the case, or is this just?
I haven't heard that recently, but back when I was town manager, I heard that, in the past.
If it comes up again, I can tell, I'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah.
Because I feel, you know, if it is, then they need to put mounds in front of it, they're gonna have to come up with a way to keep it protected, whether it's going to bite.
Don't play basketball.
We charge the basketball, we're, we're, thank you.
Page five, number one, seven, zero, nine, eight, Richard Vigu, keys, where's that? Who's Richard Vigu?
We get keys for, keys paid for Genesis file cabinet and personnel file.
We had two, the key maker, two, we had two cabinets that didn't have the keys, and I needed a key for my, one cabinet, and that was made.
Yep, that's fine, just didn't recognize the name. Thank you very much, I'm done.
Okay.
Anybody else got anything?
Sir?
Boyd, well, the reason why it wasn't Boyd, in my understanding, is he couldn't do the.
Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a.
The sign.
Yep.
Five is it, thank you. Town manager.
Okay, I'm gonna try to go through these quickly, but if you have questions, let me know. As you know, the road committee is analyzing salt priority, and whether or not to do away with it, or continue as we are, to expand the program of those sort of salt priority. Those were questions that came up at the, at two meetings, we discussed that. We had Phil Curtis in from the local road center to talk to us about some of the issues with salt priority. I'm looking further into it based on that committee meeting, and I did, the town of Randall, there's a town that has done full salt priority, so I've got a copy of their contract, and talked to those folks down there about it. The problem, the difference is that they have a seven point two mile total of roads, seven point two, we have, almost forty acres on it. I can't remember. But in any case, I'm continuing to look into it, one of the things that we have to talk about is, you need a certain size circuit, and they recommend a certain size circuit in a route for a salt pond with salt priority, and you have to keep, keep running that route. So the question is, is there an additional cost of part of the contract, is if we add another route, or we go total, total salt priority? There's a savings in sand and material, the cost, looking at the whole thing, are a little bit lower going salt priority, in terms of materials. The question is, is there more cost to, based on? The question is, is there more cost to, based on, that the contractor charged? For time and all that, if there's more time involved and all that. So, I've talked to Travis, uh, he and I are gonna meet early next week. I've gotta get this resolved so that we can get this contract out by the beginning of June. And, uh, then, and get the contract on board. Uh, and also to let, uh, our salt sand supplier go, we, we're gonna need for sand. Uh, so anyhow, there's.
Travis Moore.
Travis Moore, if there are, or, or contractors.
Yep.
So, that's where we're at, and I, I told the committee that we need to bring it to the board before we actually move forward on it, because there is a cost impact potential, and so you should be aware of that, uh, so, that's what we're discussing.
But there's no one to it than just a cost saving, you got?
Oh, no, there's, there's absolutely, you have to, there's condition of the road, there's safety, there's all kinds of stuff.
There's the environmental concerns that self-overs, like most everybody said stuff about their trees and stuff. That they're concerned with, they're being down on the bottom.
Well, we, 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 we talked to, to folks about that, so.
They take, you can drink that stuff.
But they're not gonna drink it.
No, but I went and got them, I told them, I'll give them a cup.
Anyhow, we're doing the analysis, we've learned the program for, I think, almost four years, and, uh, so the committee thought it was time to do the analysis, and that's what we're doing. Okay?
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, MMA has nominated, it's time to nominate, uh, uh, someone for the legislative policy committee, and that policy committee is a committee that, uh, basically reviews all the statutes that are being proposed, and, and advises the MMA as a whole what position that they're gonna take on them in the legislature, because they have a lobbying activity down there. Your law, uh, uh, one per, you can nominate one person per town for each senate district, I mean, we can nominate one for a senate district, uh, what is it, our senate, seventeen. So, the question is, it could be an official that's elected or not.
Hasn't that always been a town manager job?
Well, I don't care, I mean, it's up to you.
But in the past, that.
Yeah, I think that we have, but I brought it forward because I don't know if someone else.
Maybe because he couldn't have done this.
Yeah. I think we ought to keep it the same way, maybe the town manager.
Isn't that what you're doing?
Is the town manager willing to serve?
Oh, certainly, I mean, because I keep, I don't want that choice. I can't drive to that stuff, as you know, anyhow, so.
Sure. And I'm.
So if that's what you want me to do, I'll put that name forward.
I recommend that.
Thank you.
I don't know who he is, I, I'll, I'll talk to him, see.
Yeah, if he wants to do it.
If he wants to do it.
Yes.
Might even let him buy some.
RSU eighteen is, um, giving, uh, disposing of a, a large number of, uh, iPad model twos, that are about eight years old, they're still functional. Um, and they've requested towns where they could use them. Um, I thought that perhaps we could do some at the library, or in the town office, or at the center for all seasons, for kids that want to, or can't. They're going to have the money for, you can use it for reading and things like that. Uh, games, I suppose there's games on it and stuff like that, so. I told them that we want twenty-four, but I can, I can say no to that if you feel that it's.
Is there any cost at all?
No cost.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
And we could get more.
Let's get one left there.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll raise the number.
And then if we don't use them, like.
Trash them, if they go, go bad, don't fix them?
No.
And there's no, uh, I didn't realize that, I had asked, I had asked whether or not we could select one to use for the mail.
These are, well, I said, soon you could, I didn't, but we have laptops for that.
We don't have any laptops right now.
Oh, I gotta find one. Okay, I thought we had.
Did I get the last laptop?
No, I got one still.
You have a laptop?
Yeah.
Well, that, we'll have a little bit more discussion about that. Okay.
Okay.
Seco Security are arranging for them to do a camera installation at the center for all seasons, and that should be done in the next couple of weeks. Um, and I've also asked them to take a look and see what it would cost to do the transfer station. Uh, I, I would like to have the ability and the opportunity to, you know, to look at what's going on, sometimes I get calls saying, hey, what's going on up there? All that, it's, it's easy, because I can do it here at the office, I watch these guys all the time at home, I have nothing better to do. No, I'm just kidding, but, but the point is, it gives me an opportunity to see what's going on up there, or I can.
And you can, let's say, you weren't watching like Hawk, but there was some.
I get calls.
Event that happened up there, then you'd be able to go back.
And you'd be able to back it up?
Yeah, and see.
Take a picture of it? You take a send it or video, or whatever.
So like that time that fellow, you know, his vehicle went in the hopper?
You could have actually.
We could go back and see how that happened, or?
It's all, and I can clip it out, take individual photos.
That'd be smart, maybe.
The timer wasn't caught.
Right now, they have cameras up there, and I, I think some of them work, but there's one that I know is broken. The problem is, if you don't see anything wrong,
Yeah.
you don't see anything wrong, I mean, you know, you can't go back and.
They're worth the money.
Yeah, I think they're worth it. So what I may be doing is coming to you once I find out what the cost is, and asking if I can spend over reserve for the transfer station.
Sure.
Okay.
Now, they would wire them also, why?
They would be wired. As far as I know, I mean, I haven't seen the, the, I haven't actually had a proposal from Seco Security, but they're gonna do it. So my, my sensitivity would be wired.
We don't have to bid that out, we can go in Seco's.
Yeah, it's gonna be well less, because the, the cameras here were below twenty-five hundred, I think. The cameras at the center for all seasons is twenty-six something, so. Okay. We've had our town office number spoofed, if you know what spoofing is? Where people will take the number and Mary will get a call, and she'll look at it, and I'm not gonna answer it, because they're not gonna catch me, I'm gonna find out. Who's, oh, that's the town office number, I know that number. Okay, hello, would you like to buy a earphone, or whatever? So, uh, so we've gotten a few complaints about that, so I told people to start just getting as much information about whatever they're selling, or whatever company it is they can, and then send it to me, then I can file an LCC, without any information, it doesn't get rejected. Now, for some good news and unbelievable news, uh, I've gotten, uh, I've been pushing on the, uh, uh, Wells Fargo Bank to clean up, uh, the, uh, three forty-one Manchester Road property, as you know, Manchester Road, there's a mess down there. Uh, I got a email after having contacted them a few times, and it said, the client has approved us to complete the violation and repairs, and work is to be completed by five four, May fourth, so. Uh, I asked Mary if she saw anyone down there today?
No.
So just by that.
I called up again, and I said, I wanna make sure, you're not gonna start by May fourth, because we completed by May fourth. Yes, it'll be completed by May fourth.
They clearly have a.
So they just. Well, no, I said, I said.
He's got three more here, he's.
I've sent the pictures.
Estimating.
We're continuing to have problems trying to get the transfer station phone, but, uh, it just, I don't even wanna go into it, I'm gonna say that I'd rather deal with a dentist pulling my tooth out with, uh, strength. It's been painful, but, uh, they're supposed to be in now, uh, that phone, you know, and internet service is supposed to be in on May tenth. We're working with maintenance, they got the contact, as you know, for, uh, doing our IT upgrades and all that, so we're working with them, and we should be starting, I think, by the end of this week, uh, or early next week. Got the end up?
One question?
I just have a question, who, who's, uh, in charge of that, who runs that company?
Oh, that's, um, McDonald and Perkins, John Perkins is a, a, a principal, Steve McDonald, Liz Del is a principal, um.
So where are they at?
They're out of, uh, Winslow.
Yep.
Yeah, and actually, I've got quite a few good reviews about them, but.
How long have they been in business?
Oh, I don't know, six years, eight years, I don't know.
Just curious.
How does this affect our laptops and so forth?
You'll be getting, uh, email set up, a new email set up on your laptops, uh, I didn't think most of you folks would want Excel, all of that stuff, so on Office three sixty-five, there'll be a Office Outlook is what you're beginning, which is the, uh, email. Unless you want something else, let me know, it's so much a month, this will be constantly upgraded, this Office three sixty-five, we haven't had an upgrade since two thousand seven or eight, I think. So this will, now, this will be on a, 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 a regular fee basis, on a monthly basis. Uh, and, um, we give all the upgrades at all times, and we won't have to worry about any of that.
Do we know how many?
So is it the full three sixty-five?
Not on the, your laptops unless you absolutely want it on your laptops, because.
I didn't know if it was covered in the fee, so if I wanted to download Word from Office three sixty-five, it's an extra fee?
It's an extra fee.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I, I, I figured that the communications you were doing, uh,
Not mine, I think it's fine.
It's just a way to save some money. So much, sorry.
You don't wanna write letters, I think, yeah.
Okay, may manage, uh, may municipal association, uh, the risk management services provided us with, I'm sorry, I'll.
Sorry, just back up on that, normally when you have Excel, like you purchased the programming, and you can put it on as many devices as you want, without an additional cost, so. I'm worried.
This is, three sixty-five is a, a new approach at Microsoft, they're gonna sell your software, fee-based. It's based for the three, I think there's three areas of fees. One, you get the maximum of all of it, for so much amount, you get fifteen dollars, then you go down, uh, next step down, uh, and then you get out one for five dollars a month, I think, so.
It's all subscription-based now.
It's all.
Yeah, okay.
You're not, you're not buying a license, you're buying, you're buying a subscription, there's an annual renewal here.
Yeah.
At, at the end of the year, if you don't renew it, you lose everything you've got. You don't keep anything, you don't, you're not buying a perpetual license, you're just buying a subscription.
Yeah.
Virtually every place I know, you know, in towns are.
It's the only way Microsoft's selling it then, if they're not selling it.
I think other people are going to that model.
It's kinda like buying cable, right?
Yeah, it's cable, yes.
And you, when you don't pay your.
But you can put it on.
You don't have TV anymore.
It's still a per device license, so.
Yeah, exactly.
You can put it on your own separate devices.
Not, not your personal devices.
No, not, not through town, I'm just saying, I use three sixty-five.
So this will be compatible.
And so, it's here, it's on my computer, and then there's a version that's on, uh, my iPad. So you can.
Thank you.
Okay, so, to some better news, being management association, I mean municipal association, risk management services, uh, was kind enough to send back, uh, dividends, et cetera, to twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Nice. Well done.
I actually had things I can pass you over, they wanted each of you to see that.
That's okay.
Okay.
I probably gave five copies.
Killed five trees.
Yeah, I bet they did. Yeah. Hold it up.
Okay, um.
Yeah, looks great.
I'm arranging for Bar Harbor to, for a quarterly review on May fifteenth meeting, uh, hoping we can get them. I would have had them in today's meeting, except for I forgot that I actually, uh, had, I had a call set up.
Thank you, sir.
It's nice. Relax, what's that?
He looks mean, that's definitely not you.
Oh. Okay, the other thing I'm doing is having, uh, requesting that the members of, uh, our school board members come in, uh, on day fifteen, we have the vote coming up, if you have any questions, I definitely give us an update, so we'll be arranging for that.
So why do we have the Bar Harbor?
That's the, that's our trust fund, they're, they're, they're some of the trust funds. They need these all.
I thought, like you were talking about, like, representatives from the town, from.
Oh, no, 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 the Bar Harbor Trust. Sorry about that.
No.
Is this like a sister city thing, and I don't know, or?
No, 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 no. Okay, uh, as you know, I've been talking about the fund for, uh, efficiency delivery of local services, and putting in grant requests, working with Katie Cog. A couple of the towns reluctantly, uh, said that they, they were willing to sign on. There's no cost to them, no impact. So, we have, uh, Katie Cog, Rome, Belgrade, uh, signed on to see if we can get the contract. And I've talked to Cindy, they said, well, if you can, we'll come to the meetings and stuff. And I think that they'll see that this isn't an effort where they're gonna have to spend money if they don't want to. This is an effort to try to find out how we can identify services that, as a region, we might be able, uh, to save money on working together, or not, I mean, roads, solid waste, uh, I can think of literally dozens of things that we might be able to talk about. Now, people don't wanna participate, or maybe three towns will participate on one thing, and four towns on another, or maybe only one on another. The point being, uh, it's an opportunity for us to review and identify ways we can work together to solve a problem for delivery services, uh, at lower cost, or better services, one of the two, at the same time. So anyhow, that's out there, and moving forward.
Sir?
Yes.
Who is, uh?
Katie Cog?
No, no. Who's, uh, the grant to?
It'll be to Katie Cog.
The grant is to Katie Cog, they provide the money.
The staffing and all that.
All the staffing and the notes, and the setting up meetings, and, okay.
The only reason I wanted these other towns to sign on, because it makes the grant more substantial, you know.
More credible.
But, you know, they were reluctant, and I've been working on this for six months, wow, like, ever since the, the fund was given money back in July of last year, after the budget got through July or August. I realized that was funded again, so that's why I've been working on money. And I'm just surprised that the school district, uh, itself didn't want to fully endorse the party. Uh, and I, for fear, I believe, of irritating other people.
Well, you're just gonna have to step right out there and be a leader.
So, that's what we're doing. Okay.
Then they'll come along.
I, uh, talked to the towns about the thirty percent expansion, I haven't got to every town, I know I talked to Smithfield, Andy Marble, who, who's the person that does most of the work in those smaller towns, wasn't available, he's on vacation. Uh, but I did talk to Smithfield, and they said that the thirty percent expansion rule is only partially in place, and that's for those parcels that they can prove, uh, were, uh, not expanded after nine, nineteen eighty-nine. They knew what the square footage was in nineteen eighty-nine, pursuant to what you heard last over meeting, where they said that the law, the state law allows only up to nineteen eighty-nine, and then, if, if you knew what the square footage was at that point in time, you'd be allowed to go thirty, thirty percent. So, I, I'll bring back more reports when I get it done, I talked to Rome, Rome said, well, the reason why we passed it, this is Richard, you know Richard, we passed it because we knew Andy Marble would implement it. But, as I understand, Andy's not, he's not arguing that, that's just more in here, but I haven't talked to him specifically. So that's that issue. I've, um, put out a memo that you all should have gotten, Article forty-four, the Center for All Seasons Maintenance, uh, review, I'm gonna try to set that meeting, the first meeting up for uh, next Monday, uh, hopefully we'll be able to get that set up and moving, because, uh, I'd like to get that done in May. Get a recommendation to you for June board meeting, then be able to get it out, you know.
Is it an email?
Yeah, uh, an email to, you got it?
I got it.
You got it?
I had it.
Just checking.
Check it.
Always check it.
Okay, you didn't, just let me know.
So you're planning to have the first meeting next Monday?
I'm trying, if you were available Monday, I thought, and so the other, some other people, you know, aren't available the second Monday, Wednesday, and, you know, so I'm trying to get it all together correctly. I'm trying to get someone, let it, someone else on it. Flowers, the flower.
Say again?
Flowers, last year you, uh, approved two hundred dollars for, uh, when the carriage house came in and said they liked that flowers. Well, there was no source for that money, so that money never got in, but there was a spot, a person that donated two hundred dollars, so they were using that one. Uh, what I'd like to know is, do you want to, uh, provide money for that effort this year? If, if so, um, where do you want the money to come from? She was only requesting two hundred.
Have the flowers gone?
Around the building, and, you know, areas where, they're trying to.
Land, a little landscape, yeah.
Little landscape, yeah, you'll, you'll see the flowers, they're all.
Are they annuals or parennials?
Some of them, oh, they're all parennials.
Where could we get the money from?
Well, you could get it from your select work plant.
You mean the emergency pump?
Right. Yeah.
I'm honored to sit in touch with that, I think that's set up for emergencies only.
Okay, so would you prefer next year to put it into the, uh, budget?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't it come out of the maintenance for this building? Why wouldn't it come out of the maintenance for this building?
Well, we can find out.
Maybe we could do that?
If we have enough money in there, which is true.
There isn't enough money in there, take it.
I don't know, I don't have to talk.
We probably don't have abundant money left over on the maintenance fund at the end of this year. I mean, if we put two hundred dollars, we definitely need to find it next year.
Well, let's find, fund it next year, but we gotta find a way for it this year.
We need a sponsor.
We're gonna have an L. I, you know, I, we need to, I don't think we need to sponsor it, I mean, we can find two hundred dollars in this town.
Okay, we'll look for it, but now we can't.
I was gonna say, two hundred bucks.
Or the other thing we do is with whatever request of town people, like you're splitting your hostess.
They do that, they do that, they're doing that.
That would be my recommendation, we'll find the money tomorrow, if we can find it somewhere.
Do we provide plannings anywhere else at any other town buildings?
I think it's only, I think they do, I can't remember.
Is there any at the center?
I know it was primarily directed.
I think it's just idea.
The only stuff at the Center for All Seasons was stuff that.
We did have money, we have volunteers providing money for the town signs, that's being provided by Rhonda, I don't, just taking care of the town signs and water. By the way, she donated the picture that is on those signs, the actual original, she donated to the Historical Society, and they'll be hanging it on the wall, you know, up the side. So, okay, we'll find the money and we'll let you know where it's coming from.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Or maybe Howard will ask us, where did this money go?
That could happen.
Okay, Salt Sand Shed, David Trask, I've been trying to get ahold of him, he said he comes out with David Stevens and works travel with me. I wasn't able to make the meeting, I had to go someplace else. But Dave had a meeting and he apparently said, what you really need to do, for whatever reason, it's not giving enough draw, and he's recommending ventilation system of the roof, the roof ventilation system. And he's supposed to get in contact with me and provide me with the estimate of the cost of that.
Okay, so that makes me seriously gropey, because right from the get-go, we had concerns about the ventilation in that building.
Yeah.
And over and over again, we were told that the system that was in there was adequate.
What, what happened was, and I can show you the records on this, because I went through and looked at it. What happened was, there was a thirty-six inch fan condition, that was all that was designed, it was not adequate. In fact, people were getting nosebleeds and all of that. Then they went in and pulled that one out and put a forty-eight inch fan in. That is not adequate, you're still getting fumes where you're just coughing with that. After a while, there's just not enough ventilation in there. So, then the issue is, well, what's the problem with the ventilation system? That's why David came down and looked at that. And that was the recommendation he made. So, I know that Cindy just put in the salt sand shed, put two forty-eight inch fans in the back of the thing. This was an engineering issue.
It's been going on, we've been going on with this.
Well, the reality is, is here we go again, is we put this up for engineering, we crossed all the Ts and we dotted all the Is because we wanted to confirm that this building met all of the specifications and that we were not gonna come back and be revising and then revising again.
And the engineers didn't, as I understand too, that there was a final settlement with the engineers for whatever problems you had with the facility. It was a ten thousand or whatever it was, there was a final settlement that was made.
I didn't know anything about that.
Yeah.
I mean, I thought apparently.
Greg made a final settlement with them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, he did.
I read through.
But the thing is, if you're going complete, if you're considering complete salt priority, what is the purpose of the doing that work?
That may not be necessary if we do that.
Yeah, exactly.
No, we understand, I just say.
You're gonna salt up in there.
The salt.
You can't just.
But you're not, if you're going salt priority, you're not gonna be in there mixing, there's not gonna be that.
Well, there'll be some mixing still, that alone.
You can't go right, it can't go all salt priority, it's never gonna work.
Well, it was just.
I know.
No.
Suggested, and I'm not really a fan of that either.
Well, do. The committee is studying the issue, right?
I know, I know, Dennis.
So, one more question, the town that was accepted by a previous town manager, was that set aside for future appears to?
I think it was put into the, I thought it was put into the Rome fund, is where I think it was. Rome maintenance.
Which is where the salt. I was gone for a couple of years.
Yeah, you may go, but what happened?
Well, 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 look at.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back, Bob.
I'm not, I'm not finding fault with that.
No, no, no.
There are problems, if you read through the documentation, you understand what happened and all that.
We're not holding you under the bus, that's not.
No, it's not me, because I was over here.
Well, it's something, it's something engineering, because that should have been.
Take it, give it.
Totally, totally get it. That's why I talked to the engineers on the group meetings over the last six months.
Why are we expending this money? Because if this was, this, we had to do that.
Whatever we need to do, we need to get the safety people to work in that building.
That's fine, we will, we will coordinate this with whatever we do with salt sand, salt priority. Okay, I got a couple of issues, just real quick. We had John Williams shoot an officer. A lot of schools went down into lockdown mode. Now, initially I had heard that Belgrade went down lockdown, Lily was telling me that Belgrade went down, Central went down lockdown mode. She asked me what I should do about there, I told her I said, follow their lead. Then I found out that that hadn't happened, so I said, don't scare the kids, just keep it like normal. So, one of the things I'm thinking about doing is looking at what it is that we should be doing and how we can tighten the security up in the buildings if something like that goes down again at the Center for All Seasons, because if there's an incident down at the Belgrade Central School, there's already an agreement that they go down to the Center for All Seasons. So, I'm gonna be looking into that, I just think it's an appropriate thing to do. And I also think it's appropriate for us to see if I can get the state leagues or the sheriff into this office and into the Center for All Seasons, because those are the two things. For training on what to do if a shooting occurs or if it begins, all right? Just to let you be aware of that.
Good idea.
The other thing I want you to know is, I'm asking them questions. I had an input about a renter at one of our community centers. And the input was that the individual had, I guess it was a felon. Should we be doing background checks on renters?
Depends on what they're renting for, depends on whether they're having contact with kids.
Well, even if they don't have a contact.
I mean, are we talking houses or are we talking rent a building?
Building.
Rent.
North, North Valley Community Center or the Center for All Seasons. Should we be doing that? I don't know. The input I had made me concerned.
Now, are they renting it to provide a service like yoga or yoga or?
Or is it something?
Are they renting it for a baby shower? If they're renting it for a baby shower, then no, we don't need to do a background check.
I think that's something we need to think about.
Think about it, because it's an issue that, I mean.
And why can't you just add it to the application process? Have you ever been convicted of a felony and leave it?
Don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
Don't disagree with that.
Add it to it and leave them an opportunity to answer the question and then just say, please explain, you know.
But I wanted to bring it up because I got very nervous when I heard this. Now, the individual is no longer doing it. So anyhow, that was the issue there. Was he salt sanding it? And with that, I believe I.
Well.
Is that it?
I got, I got something, I, I came in to talk to Denny here. This was probably after the last meeting when the planning board came in and I heard that they were, had one meeting till twelve-thirty in the morning. Well, if I was unconcerned, that's way wrong. So I came in and talked to Denny and I asked him, I said, we've got to do something about this. We've got to put our heads together and come up with a plan so that our volunteers that are running the planning board are not there at twelve-thirty. I mean, that's way too late. You know, nine-thirty, ten o'clock, it should be cut off. So I talked to Peter Rushton a little bit the other morning, and we was having coffee, and I asked him if Denny had been up to. He had called him, and I told him what, and I said, we won't work with you guys, I mean, we know you guys are doing a good job, we just need to see if we can help in any way. Maybe more of the permit stuff can be put on in the area. This, you know, we just don't know what we can do, so.
I'll be looking into it, and I've been talking to other towns to see what they're doing. It's, it's a difficult problem, it's a difficult problem because we staff that committee with one of our people, the town office people. And not that we have to, we can always go get someone else, but that provides that person, like when Mary was here, we staff that committee for a while. So.
We're gonna go, I think Denny's gonna go Thursday night, I'm gonna go Thursday night, I just wanna sit in and see what goes on. I've heard a lot of stuff, I just wanna see for myself.
I said it before, and there is an issue with the minutes that are taken, because they go through the minutes in excruciating detail. Not saying that it's not important, but it may not be as important as they put the level of importance that they put on it. So, it, it, it is a kind of balancing act, you don't wanna drive volunteers away. Peter Rushton's been there for God knows how long, he does a great job, is it even him, guy? The other guys are doing a good job, it's, so the issue is, how do you, how can we help?
So, I mean, if you guys can put your heads together, come up with some ideas.
Time to meetings at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, I believe. I'm maybe a few minutes late, I have to play a couple more songs, but then I'll be back.
Thursday night?
Thursday night.
Seven, seven to one, Thursday?
What's that?
Seven to one, you said?
Yes. Yeah, of course. You wanna come?
I'll take the first shift. Well, every seven days.
No, I just, and I, and I didn't tell Peter I was coming, man.
Well, the public meeting.
It's a public meeting, I just thought, I thought maybe if we saw what went on, maybe we could help him.
I, I, you know, other than in terms of reducing workload, the workload is dependent on the level of activity in town, this year it's gone up quite a bit. And there are permits that are taking a long time, there are permit, there are people, the four activities in town that they had not got a permit for. This is going to be issue of kind of a penalty, because right now it prescribes a penalty for that, and that's something that I'll be doing, but on some. So, it's, it's a difficult problem, there's, the board, it's hardworking boards, one of the hardest working boards we have.
Absolutely, very important.
They need twice a month.
You know, so.
And they, they're the ones that also review and revise and write developmental ordinances, commercial design orders, showing design work, all of that, that's what they're going through. That's a big workload right there. Now, to our benefit, most of these folks have years and years of experience doing this stuff. Now, to our.
No. So, just to let you know what's happening, I think we need to, we need to see what we can do.
Yep.
You know, I don't know if they understand that the recording is, we found out when Ernie Price investigated, recording is illegal.
It's, it's a legal record.
Record.
Yeah, and, and, and for the period of time that we're talking about, that someone could, could actually arbitrate something in terms of a permit, it's acceptable. The real problem with recording overtime is that the media type changes, so there's no standard media stuff. That's, that's an issue, so you always have to keep your, but as long as it's up on the cloud, they should always be updating the media. If they, they're not gonna change the media format on the cloud, they'll be always gonna report that.
That might be one of the things I think they will buy. Anyway, I just think we need to help on the case, we may not be able to do that.
Can I just ask a question on the slide?
You can have one.
We used to have little cars back and have all the town owners that invited us, coenforcement.
We were waiting for the coenforcement.
All of those sorts of things and, you know.
I got people old in the.
Well, so do I, I've got them at the house, and you know, they have good times in the house, I'm like, oh, I gotta call more Charles about something. Hey, it's number three.
Quite frankly, I've asked for, at the end of every town meeting, there's going to be a checklist that we're giving out for all of the select persons that are elected. One of those things is this car development, we knew we were gonna have a problem with the ACO, we waited for that. The other thing is updating your books, getting your policies, all, sort of provide policy and board delegations to the town managers so that you have them with you, you know, we'll get, I don't know whether they've been made up, you, whatever, all of them.
Wanna have like two minutes.
It's been busy because the people are coming into town now, stay for a summer, and it's been right out straight to Park Lots.
It's a sleepy year, town.
All right, anyhow, that's the answer to that, yes, it is.
Can you make them the little carts a little quicker, Wallace? The last ones did not.
Well, you can only make the phone so small.
My, my target, my wallet, that's all I can survive. We'll make them so that.
They'll work on it. Anybody else got anything on the board?
Well, I do have, I have one, somebody from Belgrade Lakes contacted me about the streetscape. And the, there are some concerns about this, parking and the sidewalk and, and the whole, so I did, you know, talk to Anthony, I was like, I said, I did respond back and I said, you know, listen, this, the final vote on that stuff is taken outside of our tenure, so I don't have all the information.
Let me have the bite of it.
So, yeah, just to, you know, sort of a general, because I was like.
Right, right, this has been, this has been.
Because first the trees, whoo, there's been some big chatter about the trees.
There's chatter about the trees. Streetscape is something that was bought into in nineteen ninety-seven, and there were three years when the town went into ten thousand dollars a year. There was a comprehensive plan that pushed that thing forward, I came on board, I, in two thousand six, I looked, and there was a lot of things that had not been moved into comprehensive plans, so I started moving. Some of them successfully, some of them not. So, in two thousand eight or nine, I think, I asked Mike at the time, who was not on the board, if he would head up and see what we could do downtown and move the streets for skate after four, or just have a stop. But we needed to get that construction done through the downtown. He set up a committee back in two thousand nine, ten, they went through iteration after iteration, meetings after meeting, all the way through two thousand twelve. Then I think it started moving into what the board accepted in two thousand thirteen.
We wrote a report, the board.
Yeah, and you signed an agreement in two thousand thirteen, I believe it was, with the DOT, right, in terms of what you were going to move forward. And that, yeah, but then it gradually moved forward, the Friends of the Belgrade Lake Village said, oh, if that's gonna happen, then let's see what we can do to enhance things. All of that stuff went down. In two thousand sixteen, there was a vote on whether or not you should accept roughly five hundred thousand dollars, it was actually four hundred ninety-four thousand, whatever it was. A commitment from the Friends of the Village to do certain things in the town so that on the sidewalks and stuff like that. All of that stuff has gone through repeated, ad nauseam.
Ad nauseam.
And there is, there are a couple people down in the village who don't like what's happened, so you've got opponents, but that, the votes were all taken and everything, just about understanding. Now, the individual I believe that you're talking about has a concern about how parking is going to, or lack of parking is gonna affect her business, their business, I should say. That's an issue that we're gonna be meeting with MDOT, I'm gonna meet with MDOT and the individual and Tom Savio, the senator for District Seventeen. To see if there's anything we can do or if it's really a problem. So that's where we're at, and I talked to it, we've had meetings at, the meetings at, the meetings and meetings.
Well, and that's why I didn't want, I said, you know, I can't, I don't wanna just jump out and, and offer my opinion.
Send them to Denny.
You know, because I mean, the trees right from the get-go, because the way I had, what I left, it was DOT had agreed to split up some of the work so that it was minimal impact during the high season, and.
No, that's, that's still happening.
That's exactly, so that has been done, and I knew we had the concerns about the tree canopy and the bigger trees and sidewalks and approaching on people's property and.
All that stuff.
What you need to know is that DOT had an arborist look at the mall. And he made recommendations on which ones had to come down, because they're in really bad shape, and the others that should come down.
And they talked to individuals to see if they wanted to.
Yeah, and if the, and if the ones that, the ones that weren't in dire shape, it was up to Lando, basically, he wanted us to take, they said, we'll take them down at no cost to you, or we'll leave them alone. But if they come down, they're probably, they're onto your responsibility. And half, about half of those trees down there were not, Lando said, take them down.
They were terrible.
Yeah, and also the trees were terrible, I took a bunch of pictures of them, and they're basically hollow, rotten.
I've got video of the trees, the one good thing about when the trees came down is. I've got video of the trees. The one good thing about when the trees came down is the leaves were there.
Yeah.
Because if the canopy would have been there and then they would have gone down, you wanna hear screaming. But right now, when you go down through the village, I don't see different. I've got a video, I'm taking pictures, but uh it really, you know, I wasn't paying attention. But having said that, that's me, and that's my sensitivity about the trees in the village. I love trees. I want you to say I don't love trees. But I, I think that it's gonna take time, time for the canopy to redevelop, they're gonna plant trees, there's gonna be all of that.
Yeah, and the friends of the village, the big village people, have also said they wanna do something more about landscaping, so they've got plans to do that. I think there's more, more trees are gonna be planted than, than were cut down.
The real issue, yeah, you're right, but the real issue is, you're not gonna see a tree canopy there for thirty years.
I don't know.
And one of the, the, one of the good things about the tree uh orgies that we have in the tree committee, and I'm trying to reestablish that, is they can really look at that and provide us advice on what we're gonna go. Would have been very helpful if the tree committee would have been active during this period of time.
We didn't have a big group, however.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I don't want any history, I don't want any history, other than it's not.
I don't think it would have mattered, because that's a state project, not a town project.
No, no, but the tree committee could have had some influence on certain places and stuff.
That's why they're gone. They did, they did listen to, but I bet, I mean, that whole hiatus in the middle was because of what the committee said. Merchants were really concerned about that, so they agreed to that hiatus in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
Of uh.
Right, and that was one of the things that we had the state committee a couple of meetings and Robert questioned, like, okay, this needs to happen, you need to redo it.
And they gotta get the trees taken care of all down there.
Right, and there are all these pieces that have to be done, because a lot of them we put it off, but.
But the trees were a big concern and parking is a big concern.
See, if you could have parked six vehicles and now you can only park two, and I said, well, what about the off-street parking? Is this gonna be, you know, there's a proposal there for the off-street parking, is that gonna be beneficial? Because, I mean, if I go see Libby in Boston, I had to park freaking two miles away from where she lives.
Well, on the parking issue. On the parking issue, my understanding is that there's actually gonna be more legal, there's always the illegal. Well, my understanding is there's gonna be more legal parking spaces than there was in the past. That doesn't mean the problem solved. I also understand that the, the village people are uh looking at providing alternative parking lots. They're looking at buying a piece of property apart. Uh there's a couple alternatives out there.
Yeah, it's not like it's not a walkable community, so.
So they're really, they're really trying to work this out, but that's been a problem forever.
So why are they trying to bring this up again? It's been voted, the people that are complaining that you gotta get.
The one person, this is one of the.
No, but why have you gotta have another meeting? It's been said and done.
Because, you know, you respond to complaints all the time, that's one of my roles.
It is, but you could say, you know what, we've been voted on.
I'm gonna go down there, yeah, that's, well, that's.
I mean, we've had.
That's what I'm gonna say, but first I wanna get down there, wow, that's what I may say. First, I wanna get down there, see what the complaint is, right, then meet with Tom, shake hands, meet with the DOT, shake hands, and then talk.
Well, it kind of.
See whether or not we can solve the problem.
You know, we can beat this thing to death.
Yeah.
You know, because it is, it is a small community and it's business owners that rely on a certain amount of time. And in this case, how many people can park on the property that?
That's not gonna change anything right now, because they're not gonna do any construction until, uh, later.
Well, but there is a concern that this individual raised, she's losing some parking space. And I mean, she believes, based on her understanding and what she's said on the, well, that uh she may not be able to run her business if it stays this way. I believe that problem has been addressed, but we have to see.
You know what? Close to the roads, I can't run my nipples.
I know, I know. It sucks.
For a long time.
It sucks sometimes, you know.
Yes, it does.
Plus, there are certain, I was gonna say, this individual, although this individual, if you park in front of a business, she jumps all over you like it's her, it's not her space, it's off-street.
I, I think we beat this to death.
You think so? You think so?
I'm excited.
But you know, if you. Anybody that goes anyplace in the United States, ninety-nine percent of the time, doesn't have the option of parking in front of the building that you're going to go into.
No, well, like I was just saying, Olivia, they're living in houses right now.
It just doesn't happen.
It's a single room house and there are no parking spaces aside from the house.
No.
Anything else?
Well, you're supposed to live, you park where you want, forget it.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn, as I think we beat this.
You're entertaining it?
Yes.
Wanna make that motion?
Yes, and I'll second it.
Second in? All in favor?
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Let me, thank you guys.